Good evening and welcome to the March 10th, 2025 work session of the Salisbury City Council. In the event of an emergency, we ask that everyone remain calm, exit through the doors to your right, proceed to the right and down the stairs. If the hallway is blocked, exit to your left, down the hall and down the stairs. Please do not use the elevator and let us know if you need any assistance. At this time, we ask that everyone please silence your cell phones and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This time, we invite Pastor Sean McCarthy from Community Christian Church for the city invocation.
Thank you all, I'm grateful to be here. Let's go ahead and pray. Lord, we are grateful, thank you for this city that we have. Thank you for the leaders that are here and the people represented from this place. God, help us to be good managers of what you've given us. Help us, God, to look into the issues and to deal with what we need to deal with. And, Lord, I want to ask for wisdom in this meeting today. I want to ask that your presence be felt and that you would lead everything that's on their agenda tonight. God, thank you for all the people who serve here and thank you, Lord, that you have blessed us in so many ways. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor McCarthy. We're going to go a little bit out of order this evening. We're going to skip to our Arts, Business and Culture Department, if that's fine, with a budget amendment to appropriate funds for 2024-2025 Maryland Folk Festivals. Good evening.
Good evening.
And if you all would mind just pronouncing your name and your title for the record.
Scott Roberts, Assistant Director of Arts, Business and Culture.
Caroline O'Hare, the Events and Culture Manager.
Good evening, folks. Take it away.
We're here to request funding for the 2025 Maryland Folk Festival. The funds will be utilized for all facets of festival operations, including staffing, production fees, artist fees, equipment, staging and lighting. We've determined that $86,000 is needed to be transferred from the City of Salisbury budget to help complete this budget.
No, I stand by what you said and if you have any questions about last year, we've inserted in your packet some festival numbers that show the success of the event and if you have any questions about this year, I can share that information as well.
Absolutely. I think-
The $86,000, is that a temporary loan, so to speak, that comes out of the budget and then is replaced after the festival or after the budget hearing?
No, ma'am, that would be the city's contribution to the festival.
City's contribution, okay.
So then, just for the record, what did, and apologize for doing the research beforehand, what did we appropriate for this year's festival, for the budget?
The previous festival's appropriation was $587,000.
So we're allocating an additional $86,000?
I apologize, that was for the previous festival.
Yes.
Currently, we have not appropriated anything for this festival.
So then, when this budget, I don't know if you want to change that here?
Yeah, so historically, since we've had the inception of this, this budget has covered Caroline's salary and benefits and a couple other things. That's been the allocation from the administration and council. It's an accounting practice where we have had that money into this account. In this upcoming budget, we'll be moving the salary out of this year's budget and into the general fund budget, but we've always made this allocation. So that 86 is to cover the salary. Traditionally, we have paid for that position out of this special revenues account, so for this year will be the final time we do that since her salary's being drawn from that account. But it's been an obligation we've always committed from the city. So in FY '26 budget, you'll see that actually not being a transfer into this account for next year's event, it will be just seen in the general fund expenditures as we budget for next year.
Thank you, Mr. Kettrow. So again, so we won't see this expenditure moving forward in the budget request for the Folk Festival, this would just be under ABCD?
Correct.
So in theory, the salaries for ABCD's department should stay the same because the salaries under the Folk Festival is still under ABCD department?
Yes, the difference would be the-
Can I ask the why? I guess you-
Sure. So, from an accounting perspective, if you're looking at the actual accounts within our municipal, Caroline's salary does not exist within the organizational budget, so when you're looking at the FY '25 budget to the FY '26 budget, you will see an increase as a result of that allocation. But from the general fund, if you looked at all of the accounts, the funding comes from a general transfer account, so it exists in a different account that's usually not presented to council, but it is an obligation that exists within the larger general fund budget. So if you look at it, you'll see the increase, but the increase specifics for that department will go up, but for the general fund in totality, you will not see it, so.
Okay, that makes sense. I think that should have been added in the legislation just to make it more clear for the record and for council and for just to make sure that it was a salary appropriation, that would have mixed all the conversations. But I appreciate you all. I look forward to this year's festival. Last year was definitely fun and I know that you all want to increase the bottom line with that. So while you have the opportunity, take any moments to kind of give us a sneak peek about what the Folk Festival's going to bring in?
Yeah, absolutely. Last year, we had three beautiful days. We had an incredible square dance event on Saturday night and we're hoping to bring that back and make that a tradition because we had so many people come together and just have a great time and it didn't matter if you knew it or didn't know it. I didn't know it, still don't, and yet I participated. And there was even a gentleman who months later sent me a poem that he wrote about that, which I thought was quite nice. We've had a good amount of sponsors return. Currently, we have $139,500 in committed sponsorships. We obviously have all our grants out, some of which will be awarded in July, so fingers crossed there. We've started reaching out to artists as well as opening up our marketplace and food vendor applications, so it's full steam ahead, should be a very positive event and a boon for our local businesses.
Good.
Just one final comment. As you guys are noticing, last year's budget to this year's budget and just kind of where we started, I really want to commend our team for finishing the right sizing of this event. This is a marquee staple signature event for our community, is the highlight of our year. As you look at our downtown events, it is a well-received, largest event that we have in Salisbury. But I think we've rolled up our sleeves, made some good decisions on how to make sure that this budget and this event is right-sized and affordable so that we can make this event and execute it at this level. It's come far away from the original budget of $1.2 million to here, but I still think anybody who came last year and even this year, it's going to be a wonderful three-day event that has a lot of entertainment, a lot of opportunity.
I certainly echo that and again, we thank you all for the work and the longevity and the length of time it takes to put on this event. Again, three days, but it takes months and months of preparation, so thank you all and thank you for certainly underscoring that. Counsel, any more questions?
Huge undertaking, thank you.
Okay, with no objections, do we have consensus to proceed?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, and we'll pivot back to our council presentations. We'll start with Councilwoman Gregory with a proclamation on Endometriosis Awareness Month.
Whereas endometriosis is a disease that impacts millions of individuals worldwide for a reason that is unknown to doctors and misunderstood by many, and where endo occurs when tissue is similar to the lining of the uterus grows outside of it, leading to painful symptoms such as pelvic pain, heavy menstrual bleeding, infertility and other life-altering challenges. And whereas individuals with endo face long delays in diagnosis, inadequate medical support and significant physical, emotional and financial burdens, and whereas the lack of early diagnosis and effective treatments often lead to a decline in quality of life affecting the overall life opportunities for those impacted by endo. And whereas annual awareness provides an opportunity to spread information on the enduring impact of endometriosis while acknowledging the toll it may take on a person and how it impacts their lives. Whereas we come together today to spread awareness of the disease and the impact it may have on individuals so those living with endometriosis feel supported, heard and empowered in their journey toward better health and well-being. Now therefore, DeShawn M. Doughty, President of the City Council, does hereby proclaim March 2025 as Endometriosis Awareness Month in our city and call upon all residents, organizations and community leaders to join together to promote awareness and invest in research and improve the lives of individuals affected by endo.
Go for it.
You want to do a picture first?
Yeah.
Perfect.
That's, no, that's, oh, okay.
I mean, it was declared by you.
Everybody, everybody get up here.
Of course, right here. All people go back in, just stay back.
Thank you so much. First and foremost, I just want to say thank you so much for your support in raising awareness about endometriosis. My name is Shannon Hannawald. I started Endo Warriors of the Eastern Shore five years ago because I wanted to raise awareness about something that took a drastic toll on my life and I didn't want it to affect anyone else the way that it has affected me and so many other women. I am a wife, a mother, a best friend, an aunt, a daughter, a granddaughter and an endometriosis warrior. And I know that some women who think that endometriosis isn't that big of a deal or it's normal to have menstrual cramps, it is not normal. So anyone that fights this disease is a warrior and is a survivor. I'll try and make my story short, but I was 15 when my pain started. The doctors told my parents I was lying because I didn't want to go to school because they kept doing ultrasounds and CAT scans. Endometriosis can only be found through laparoscopic surgery. There is no other way to find it except for laparoscopic surgery. So once I finally found a doctor that would listen to me, he did the surgery and I was diagnosed with stage four endometriosis. When I was 17 and I was still in the middle of nobody wanting to listen to me and everybody saying there was nothing wrong with me, I did try to take my own life because I was at the point where I felt like, what was the point in living? Because nobody was going to listen to me, I was in excruciating pain and that is one of my main reasons for doing this because I don't want anyone to ever feel like they're at that point where that's their last option and that is what they have left. So that night after I took that entire bottle of pills and I had to go to the hospital and all of that that goes with that, then I decided that I was going to fight and I had to go through fertility treatments. We lost one baby before we had my six-year-old son and he makes up for about 10 kids, but he is so worth it. One of my biggest reasons for doing this is I have a lot of nieces by blood and by love and I would be mortified if they were treated the way that I was treated. And endometriosis comes with a lot of autoimmune disorders, Crohn's being one of them, and I bring that up only because I was diagnosed with that about a year and a half ago. And when I was in the emergency room multiple times for that, the doctors took me back to that 16-year-old girl who they said there was nothing wrong with and made me feel worthless and not listened to. One of those doctors said to me that endometriosis was not painful and it was not an emergency and he did not know why I was in the emergency room. The difference was I wasn't that scary little 16-year-old girl anymore and I let him have it. But my fear was that if my niece was laying in that bed or any other young lady was laying in that bed, they're not going to stick up for themselves or advocate for themselves because if you see me walking down the street, I look like a normal 41-year-old woman and nobody else is going to say anything. If my insides were on my outside, you would probably stay 10 miles away from me. So just because you can't see something does not mean that somebody is not suffering from it. You need to always advocate for yourself, we need to always raise awareness about endometriosis. I know it's uncomfortable to talk about, especially for men to discuss or hear about because they're women's issues, but it's the only way that anything is going to change and I don't want anyone's daughters or granddaughters or nieces to ever go through what I and so many other women have. So I just wanted to say thank you very much for having me and thank you very much for continuing to support us. Thank you.
Ms. Hannawald, thank you for your bravery, thank you for keeping us abreast of how to stand with you with this battle, so we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll pivot to Councilwoman DeShiel, who will present some certificates of recognition for the Amazing Shake winners.
It is my pleasure to be able to give certificates of recognition to three students from Prince Street School. My heart is at Prince Street, I was there for 22 years as a kindergarten teacher. We have three students that we want to recognize for their accomplishment in the Amazing Shake competition. Throughout the competition, each of them has shown an outstanding performance. Their professionalism, communication skills and leadership have set them apart as a true winner and will make a lasting impact on our community. Competing against hundreds of students nationwide, they displayed remarkable skills in networking, problem-solving and public speaking, embodying the core values of the Amazing Shake. We are proud to recognize their remarkable achievement. In witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and the seal of the City of Salisbury this 10th day of March 2025, our council president, DeShawn Doughty. So I'm going to announce the third place winner first, if you would like to come forward. Madeline Lewicki.
You want to step in front and just take a picture?
The second place winner is not here, unfortunately, he is sick, Andrew Schaefer. So I will give this to Mr. Miller, if you'll see that he gets this, please.
You want a picture?
Yeah.
Here we go, all right. Andrew, looking good, Andrew. Thanks, Jason.
And our third recipient is the first place winner and that's Lea Chaney. She'll come through.
If we can invite all three winners and administration with council, we can get a group picture right here in front, if you don't mind.
I have one more comment, if you don't mind. This could not happen without the participation of the parents, the support of the parents and the support of the school, so thank you.
Sign the waiver.
So something I want to play in. Shake and bake.
And again, congratulations to those contestants and I think we'll see them in council chambers at some point later in life. They were some amazing students. We'll give them just a moment to-
Thank you for our long chat.
Oh, yeah, thank you. We'll invite members from, I believe we have our Director of Infrastructure to resolution to show support for Bird City, Maryland Initiative. We have Mr. Nick Voitik. Good evening, Mr. Voitik.
Good evening, guys. Yeah, so it's a resolution to kind of re-up a certification that the city has had in the past, for about the past five, six years, something called Bird City, sort of an acknowledgement of the importance of birds and their importance to the community and we should take efforts to try to help them out and make sure that they're safe and healthy and have a place in town. There are a bunch of different steps that Zach, our planner, has been working on to kind of recertify us because I think it might have lapsed a little while ago, so doing the resolution in support of it is one of those steps. That's basically what it is.
Wonderful. I don't know who looked into the lapse in the certification, but I'm glad that we got that back. I remember, I'm trying to think back a long time ago, but I'm wondering what activities you all will have planned, but I look forward to that. I remember doing some things in school, but that was just a little while ago, but I look forward to your collaboration with that.
Yeah, I think we're going to try work on education things, tabling, world migratory bird days of things, so we're going to see if something happens maybe at the zoo or otherwise in town.
Yeah, and one quick plug, I know that they don't have the facility anymore, but the Ward Museum and their board members are top, they would be ecstatic to be some part of this, so if we could reach out to those members and if you need some assistance, but they would be so happy for their resources to be utilized. Yeah. Counsel, any other questions?
Just quiet.
Yes.
Thank you for doing it.
With no objections, do we have consensus to proceed?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. All right, next, we will pivot to the public comment portion of the agenda on the above items. If you plan to speak, please go to the podium, state your name, and if you are a city resident, you will have three minutes to speak. There's one more opportunity, just opening up. All right, seeing no per-
Which item are you going to do first?
Those are on the agenda items of the work session, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, happy talk's over, reality's coming now. First of all, on the birds thing-
If you wouldn't mind stating your name and if you're a city resident-
Riley Smith, Salisbury. Why else would I waste my time? It's a refreshing observation and duty of the City of Salisbury to look after the birds, which is what we all should have been doing anyway. But under the totalitarian regime of Jake Day slash Jack East, Jake Day gassed them, so I hope you're aware of that and possibly remember it. I hope that this new initiative starts making up for it. As far as the water and sewer budget amendments-
That wasn't on the work session, Mr. Smith.
Do what?
That wasn't on the work session, Mr. Smith.
Oh, it wasn't?
No, sir.
What amendment? For the Maryland Folk Festival, I think he's talking about.
Okay.
I don't know.
Okay. Well, these, I hope you're working off of these things, are you? This is what you're presenting to the public.
Correct, yes.
Oh, and this. Everybody seen that?
Yeah.
First of all, the city loves to estimate things and if business, real business with real people having to make a living and corporations estimated everything and they estimate it incorrectly, they go bankrupt, people lose their jobs. In government, they can make all the estimates they want because they go on forever depending on the quality of the management of the entity, city, state or local, and there are no consequences. So as presented in this flyer, there's a 20,000 estimated attendance and this has been going on for a long time. I don't know why you don't have an accurate amount or count of people. You're basing, you're also basing on an estimate of 1.1 million that it brings in and I don't know how you could possibly estimate that, even by dividing that by 33,000, which is the population, gives you nothing, okay? You're showing a little financial presentation here of vendor revenue of 15,000, sponsorships of 197,000.
Mr. Smith, time is up, I'll let you finish your thought.
Congress, United States gets five minutes and they also hold up signs, let me just say that, especially Democrats. The revenue was 212,000 and the expenses were 212,000 and you quoted professional services, 83,000 artist fees, I understand artist fees, operating-
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith, we appreciate it.
Okay. All right.
Any other comments from the public on the above items? All right, seeing none, the time is 6:27, the work session is adjourned this time and I do call the legislative session to order. We will present the agenda. I pivot to our clerk, Ms. English, do you present the legislative agenda?
Okay, so on the legislative agenda today, we have two resolutions, I believe it's 10 ordinances for second reading and then the usual stuff after that.
Ms. English, I will entertain a motion to approve the legislative agenda as presented.
It's a move. Second.
Any changes or amendments to the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye and the agenda is adopted. All right, we'll move forward to our resolutions for this evening. I will entertain a motion to approve resolution number 3382 for reading.
Moved, second.
Ms. English?
Resolution number 3382, proposing the annexation to the City of Salisbury of a certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon the corporate limits of the City of Salisbury to be known as Pine Way, Pohanka Kia Annexation as described in the property description and annexation plat attached and incorporated as exhibits herein containing 2.954 acres more or less.
Are there any questions or discussion from the council?
None.
Hearing none, the motion on the floor is to approve resolution number 3382. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye, resolution number 3382 is adopted. I will entertain a motion to approve resolution number 3383.
Still moved.
Second.
Ms. English?
Resolution Number 3383, proposing the adoption of an annexation plan relative to the annexation to the city of Salisbury referencing Resolution 3382.
Are there any questions or discussion from the council?
No.
Hearing none. The motion on the floor is to approve Resolution Number 3383. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The chair votes aye. Resolution Number 3383 is adopted. Thank you, Ms. English. We will pivot to our ordinances. They will be read by our city attorney, Ashley Boucher. I will entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2918 for second reading.
Still moved. Second.
Good evening, council. Ordinance Number 2918, this is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury amending Chapter 5.64 of the Salisbury City Code entitled Towing Companies to update procedures for dispatching police-directed towing, operations of a police-directed tow on scene, and penalties for violations of the code. This is before you tonight for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
Thank you. Are there any discussions or questions from the council?
No.
The motion on the floor is to approve Ordinance Number 2918. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say nay. Hearing none. The chair votes aye. The motion passes and Ordinance Number 2918 is approved. I will entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2919 for second reading.
Still moved. Second.
Ordinance Number 2919, this is an ordinance to accept funds received from the Chesapeake Bay Trust in the amount of $148,267 as awarded to plant 834 trees in the city of Salisbury. Again, before you for second reading. No changes or amendments.
Are there any questions or discussion from the council? The motion on the floor is to approve Ordinance Number 2919. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The chair votes aye. The motion passes and Ordinance Number 2919 is approved. I will entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2920 for second reading.
Still moved. Second.
Ordinance Number 2920, this is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to appropriate funds for drinking water, state revolving fund projects included in the Naylor Mill Water Main Extension Project, and a PFAS study at the Paleo Water Treatment Plant, and a lead service line replacement project. Again, before you for second reading. No changes or amendments.
Any questions or discussion from the council? The motion on the floor is to approve Ordinance Number 2920. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The chair votes aye. The motion passes and Ordinance Number 2920 is approved. I will entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2921 for second reading.
Still moved. Second.
Ordinance Number 2921, this is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury authorizing a budget amendment and the mayor to appropriate funds for the PFAS study and treatment. Again, second reading. No changes or amendments.
Any questions or discussion from the council?
None.
The motion on the floor is to approve Ordinance Number 2921. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The chair votes aye. The motion passes and Ordinance Number 2921 is approved. I will entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2922 for second reading.
Still moved. Second.
Ordinance Number 2922, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury authorizing a budget amendment to appropriate funds for completion of the elevated water tank maintenance project. Again, tonight for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments.
Any questions or discussion from council? Motion on the floor is to approve Ordinance Number 2922. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes and Ordinance Number 2922 is approved. I will entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2923 for second reading.
Still moved. Second.
Ordinance Number 2923, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury amending Section 8.04.050 of the Salisbury City Code to add and edit language regarding the counting method for false alarms. This is also before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments.
Any questions or discussion from council?
None.
The motion on the floor is to approve Ordinance Number 2923. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The chair votes aye. The motion passes and Ordinance 2923 is approved. I will entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2924 for second reading.
Still moved. Second.
Ordinance Number 2924, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2025 general fund budget to appropriate funds to the Salisbury Fire Department's operating budget. And this is regarding the repairs to the fire chief's vehicle. This is for you for second reading. No changes or amendments.
Any questions or discussion from council? The motion on the floor is to approve Ordinance Number 2924. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The motion passes and Ordinance 2924 is approved.
That the chief's truck? What happened? I see. Okay, be more careful.
It was ruled not at fault for the-
Poor chief.
I approve a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2925 for second reading.
A second.
Ordinance Number 2925, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Maryland Department of Health for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $29,625 and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds for the Salisbury Fire Department. And this is regarding the, well, it's regarding the grant. This is before you for second reading. No changes or amendments.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion from council? The motion on the floor is to approve Ordinance Number 2925. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The chair votes aye. The motion passes and Ordinance Number 2925 is approved. I will entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2926 for second reading.
Still moved. Second.
Ordinance Number 2926, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2025 general fund budget to appropriate funds to the Salisbury Fire Department's operating budget. And this is regarding the Blacktop parking lot at Fire Station 1 and the amount of 47,000. Also before you for second reading. No changes or amendments.
The motion on the floor is to approve Ordinance Number 2926. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The chair votes aye. The motion passes and Ordinance 2926 is approved. I will entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2927 for second reading.
Still moved. Second.
Ordinance Number 2927, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury amending Chapter 2.16.020 H and G of the Salisbury City Code to grant the fire chief the authority to designate who in the career duties shall be second and third in command in the department and who shall assume the duties and responsibilities of the fire chief in the event the fire chief is unable to fulfill his or her duties and responsibilities due to illness, incapacity, or absent. As with all the others, this is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments.
Are there any questions or discussion from council? The motion on the floor is to approve Ordinance Number 2927. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The chair votes aye. The motion passes and Ordinance 2927 is approved. Thank you, Ms. Boucher.
You're welcome.
This time we'll pivot to the public comments portion of the agenda. Again, you will have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and if you are a city resident. And topics are on any discussion.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Dave Dave Chittington, Southampton Bridge Road. I was encouraged back two weeks ago and even a little bit prior to that on the 17th when I had written a letter to all the members of the committee and I did hear back from the council president encouraging me to come and open up dialogue on the Adopt a Road program that our church is trying to do and I'm dragging some Boy Scouts groups into it. It is something that you don't do right now, but I've found that it's a very successful program that we had when I was chair of the Environmental Commission back in my hometown. So I know it does work. And I received some very encouraging news when I was contacted by the city council president for a second information and also the mayor. And I sent out a more detailed program as to how it did work and how it will work. I also had a very nice conversation with Zach White today, saying that he has forwarded some information. So I'm here again just to, and I'll come back as long as it takes, to see if we can't make something like this work for our city. I would like to turn my attention to the county, but I'd like to get the city on board first because it is something that we're not trying to eliminate the green team from. They're a fabulous group of people, but this would be somewhere that they would not have to worry about or devote their attention to. So again, I hope for your consideration in this matter. It is very, very low in expense. Basically talking about vests or bags. And I would be able to help anybody with any questions on the whole program.
Thank you. We appreciate your time. Ms. English, we'll take your contact. We'll work out a time this week where we can meet and I'll give you some one-on-one time and we'll see exactly how we can make this move forward as soon as possible.
Okay.
I appreciate you coming again to us.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Lynn Bratton, city of Salisbury, and as the mother of an eagle, I'm very excited to see us networking with potential scouts. I think that's awesome to get them involved and cleaning is always a good thing, whether it's the roads or the bedrooms, whatever. So I've got a couple just quick little things tonight. First of all, this is not, I don't want anybody in the room to take anything offensive at me right now, Ms. Julie, but I have been looking for some minutes and the minutes online have stopped as there are no minutes from September up until like now. So I know we're behind and I hope that there's a plan to get those minutes. Those are our written records of what goes on here in this room. I know we've got the audios somewhere that we could go back and research and we've got the files that have all the agendas that I've looked through. But those are the written records that if somebody on the council or anybody in the public wants to see, that would be the first place, I think, to be looking. So hopefully there's a plan and, because that's six months worth of documents that are missing from four meetings a month. When we were, well, you're still doing four meetings a month, you're just doing them every two weeks. And one of the reasons why I was looking at that is back in January and February of 2024, I was in the room over in the other place at a city council meeting where the Zen City program was being demonstrated and we had a video, we had a guy on Zoom and there were lots and lots of questions amongst and between the council members and it was unanimously tabled and not put forward. And those were the minutes in January and February that you can research and look at and read. And now it is being publicized, it's being implemented, apparently it's being paid for, it's being utilized. And I know all the questions that were being asked back in January and February have probably not been answered. And I don't know how it kind of got to where it is now. So I think we need to revisit that decision-making process and say, if the council's supposed to approve it, then that's the way it needs to be. It doesn't just kind of wait a year and then show back up on the public agendas. So thank you for letting me voice that. I feel like sometimes I'm just kind of like the little pit bull in the room, but somebody needs to do it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bratton.
First of all, I discussed with you, council president, about getting the agendas mailed and I've had them mailed to me. I don't know what you call them, the minutes of what is going to be presented at a council meeting. I've had them mailed to me or emailed to me multiple years, for a long, long time. And I called the president and asked him why he had stopped without any notification. And he gave me some mishmash of baloney as to why he didn't. And he ended the call with saying he would. So at this point, you lied to me. I don't appreciate it, okay? And I know you people love to ignore and, oh, well, we're just gonna roll over all the taxpayers and voters and do whatever we want to do. And that needs to slow down and stop. And here is a letter I got from Johnny Mox, who, this is where we're going if this stuff doesn't stop. He... There is a budget gap of $3.3 billion after a surplus of $2 billion. Governor Moore started with a surplus of $2 billion. It's now a deficit of $3.3 billion. And his word was alarming. And guess who's working for Wes Moore? Begins with and ends with Jake Day. Okay, the other thing is, as far as these memorandums and estimates and proposals, especially on the water and sewer, I do not understand why, you can go through all of the baloney, you know, we need money from the budget, include this in the budget, come out with the budget, and we want more, more, more. What I would like to have is a layman's paragraph on the end as to what you're basing current water and sewer with bills on. And that includes all the little mishmash miscellaneous trash for this, you know, what color you're going to be today and all that baloney and charging us for it. You could put a spreadsheet in, you can punch in the numbers every time you make a proposal and bring that down to the layman's understanding, including me, and I'm an accountant. This makes, when you do it in pieces, it makes absolutely no sense. And you can get away with murder doing this. And like, oh, let's give the fire department $14 billion, we'll encumber that, then we'll put that in the budget, but we won't pay for it. I was just using the fire department as an example, not for any particular reason.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Seeing none. We'll pivot to the administration comments for today.
I don't have much. I just wish, since we transitioned over to the madam clerk over there being the one who has to read annexation resolutions, should have read the whole thing. I would have found that humorous.
At least one time.
I know, I guess not. But no, I appreciate the efficiency and the way the meetings are being run. Welcome me back. Thanks for making everything run smoothly when I was gone last week. So I'll pivot to the mayor.
I don't have too much either, other than the same spring forward and things are getting warmer. I'm looking forward to the hops on the river and, you know, all the spring events that would come with, including the zoo stuff. So, yeah, I don't have anything specific to-
Thank you all.
Happy March.
Yeah. Any comments from council?
I just want to give a shout out to Habitat for Humanity for their event Saturday night. It was amazingly well-attended. They raised a huge amount of money to build houses for people in need. It was a great event. The theme was Kentucky Derby and I struggled to find a hat. So I was very, very impressed with some of the ladies and their hats that they had. That was, it was a really impressive showing. So I've got, I've got to get up my game for next year, whatever the theme is. But it was a really great event, very well-attended. Glad to see council president. He tried to talk me into doing, what was it, the-
It was the wobble.
It was the wobble. It was the wobble. Tried to talk me into doing it. I don't do that. I just don't. So he did a fantastic job. I tripped over my feet and then walked back to my table. But it was a great event.
Yes, yes. Thank you. Any other comments from council?
I want to give you an update on the airport. Attended their meeting today. New signage is coming so that hopefully it will be clear to tourists and anybody needing the airport. That's coming. The security system is completed, so with all of the issues we've had with the airlines and concerns there, our airport will be secure, hopefully, for everybody. Passengers were up January 34%. So people are using our airport. As has been mentioned, the state funds that are being cut will impact our airport. It's just a matter of, you know, wait and see as to what that will involve. It was, it was my pleasure to attend the retirement recognition ceremony for Deputy Fire Chief Darren Scott at the end of February. 39 years he has served the city of Salisbury for the fire department. Huge, huge compliment. I wish him well. I wish him well. Towngown had their luncheon last week. They're working on SU's Centennial, which is coming up. Lots and lots of things they have planned for that, and I'll try to keep you updated. If you want something to do that is very interesting, Patrick Henry has a wonderful exhibit downtown, and he's from Berlin.
Oh, yeah.
And I think you met, we met him at an opening before, and his artwork is just really, it's really cool. But so that's at the Museum of Eastern Shore Culture, and it's open from Tuesday through Saturdays from 11:00 to 4:00, and they're going to have rotating exhibits and also display award museum items as well. And the one thing I was most impressed with, even though I live near college students, 95% of the athletic teams volunteer and participate in our community. And I think that is absolutely remarkable, and I congratulate them. Two things. Here's the thorn. Mr. Kitzrow, Carroll Street.
Just got back.
Update on Carroll Street. I'm not giving it up.
We have one.
Too.
We were circulating a drawing, so it should be coming out.
Got it, got it. And the other thing is, if we could have an update on the boarded-up houses, that I know that Mr. Boda is looking into the owners of these homes, but that may be a quicker fix for some housing in the city.
Specifically with that update, just if there's any movement on transitioning them to being livable dwellings, or our next steps, just kind of like what the status is of, I just want to make sure I clearly.
Oh, no, boarded up, not the ones that the city owns necessarily. These are ones that, when you drive around town.
Okay.
You see some smaller homes that are boarded up. And I know that Mr. Boda is working on trying to identify the owner of those homes and see where we can go from there. So I just wondered if you had any luck with that. Thank you.
Okay, just a couple things. I do have, going back to Carroll Street, so we're not off that. I do know about the drawing that Mayor Taylor, you said back in December, that in January you had a drawing and was going to present it. It's March. Can you present that drawing to us at our next session or something, or let's talk about this? I actually want to see the drawing.
Yeah.
Okay, just so we can get an idea.
It's emailable.
Yeah, just for, you know, transparency. And I know a lot of people in the community really want to see it, and they really want to know what's going forward. And the council really doesn't have an idea of what to say to them, other than a drawing is coming. The other thing is, I like to have an update on the Ann Street Village, maybe a presentation to council about how it's moving forward, how it's been redesigned, what the status is, also the status of the comprehensive plan. I know there's supposed to be some community engagement with that, and I'm not sure or have heard of anything other than, I think there was a survey on our website. I don't know the percentage of how many people have participated in that survey, or what the survey even says. I've got it written down for you, too. I'll give you this copy, just to kind of get an idea of where we are with that process, you know, what the efforts have been. I just have under, on the website, under the community engagement tab, there is a survey on what the community would like to see for a possible community, a youth community center over there on the west side. So please know that we're trying to gather some ideas, some very good input about a community youth center on the west side of town. So please go to the city's website and under the community engagement tab, there is the survey. I think it takes about eight minutes to fill out. Now, the Zen City, which Ms. Bratton was talking about, I think we had talked about that in recent months and went forward with that at some point. We can look that up. But I think a good rollout, I know there's been some rollout on the city's website, but maybe a continuous city education about the Zen City, you know, for a while would be good, might be helpful.
The plan, as it's scheduled right now, you still have next agenda. We are planning to have Jordan Ray, our media specialist, do a presentation on Zen City and update of the rollout, what we've seen in the first 30 days of that, and answer any additional questions you may have. Part of the community engagement for the youth center is one of the first rollout pieces of that Zen City platform.
Great. And a really, really fun thing, and I don't even know their names yet, but I do want to welcome the two spider monkeys to the zoo. I did see a picture of them, but I don't know if the name was in the press snap or what, but I was so overtaken about how absolutely gorgeous they are. And I'm glad to hear that they're doing well and seem to be making friends at the zoo, and I cannot wait to go visit them.
Would you like us to bring them to the next council?
Please do.
Oh.
Please do, please do. I would absolutely please do. That would be fantastic.
They fit right in.
Yeah. There's plenty of bananas here, so.
Here in the U.S.
We would definitely, but everyone go to the zoo, check out the new spider monkeys. They're beautiful, beautiful.
Your blood bank building is closed.
Well, it is closed.
But they have, don't they have the bus if you want to?
Well, apparently, from what I understand is, the site is closed, so individual appointments, but they do have their mobile. But I don't know when they're going to be doing their mobile blood drives. So I've been trying to call for two weeks, I guess now, to try to get further information on that. Also, I wanted to get further information on the American Red Cross blood donations, and the closest one for them is in Frankfurt. The closest one, right, Delaware, I know, right? So, or is it, it might be, excuse me, it's Fenwick. I think it's Fenwick. And for the Blood Bank of Delmarva, it's Stagsboro. So I'm trying to get more information about that, because it was a huge mistake to take it out of Salisbury, obviously, and it is such a vital service for everybody. I mean, we have a regional hospital here. The spring and summer are coming up. We know that, especially from the beach, they fly them in from the beach, there's tons of accidents, injuries, what have you. And you just never know when you're going to need it. Blood donation is very important, also donating plasma. So I am really trying to, you know, really pinpoint some really, really good information on that and try to figure out how we can continue to donate blood here in Salisbury. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, council. That's some really useful and some great updates on what you all are doing and what's happening in our community. Just a few things, and I won't spare you all some time. I had a couple meetings last week with some great partners in our community. One is the founder of Symphony 21, and we met with some partners of the state to figure out how we can expand him and his mission as someone who has a 21st Century orchestral and music arts, and really great with our youth. And we've seen a decline in youth being interested in the music and the arts since COVID. So it's been, he has been really instrumental in gathering and gaining the youth in having that need, or actually wanting to learn about, you know, the music. So had some meetings with some folks in the arts industry, and working out ways that we can help promote him and promote our resources here on the shore. But he does have a concert on April 5th, and that's at Holloway Hall. You can just Google Symphony 21, you'll find the resources there. And so I've already signed up, and I'll send that to council. It's great that we can, it's a wonderful performance, is what I've heard, and it always sells out, even though the tickets are free. You can donate, but it always sells out. So make sure you hop on that as soon as possible. And of course, met with, on behalf of council, we, if council has, have wanted to be more partners with our public schools, and you've seen it here with us being in our school system more and interacting with the youth, and just figuring out how we can make that mesh. And so I met with superintendent of schools and kind of got some feedback on him and how we can be better partners, and some really insightful things, especially with our planning and our zoning and just development. So I'll be bringing that to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and of course, our DID team and administration. So I will keep that meeting and that quarterly meeting ongoing, just to make sure that we are doing our part as a city. Because even though we don't determine what happens directly with the public schools and their budget, but they are our residents, they are our youth, they are our future, and we have to be a part of that conversation. Also met with some members of higher education administration here in the area, and specifically UMS, and figure out how we can be more of a partner, being that we are the closest, you know, largest city to them. Really excited for what that means for their upcoming programs they have, their vet school. Again, we have our zoo that we, that you all have highlighted. So I'm really excited about that, especially with us putting some underscoring with accreditation and the bear exhibit, and just these new monkeys that are coming up. And I think we can be really great partners as well. So that's what we're doing, is figuring out how Salisbury can be a resource in those mutual partnerships there. Had the honor of attending the ACE mentoring presentation where they presented high school youths from the area. They were part of the, which ACE stands for Architecture, Construction, and Engineering. I was actually a part of that in high school, but they presented their research project on a transportation hub in the city. And it was interesting, you know, to see that and see their ideas and their research, and it was really profound, and some really bright students who took part in that program. So we support them and their efforts, and I told them to send us their research so we can put that in, to make that a part of our plan. And so Mayor Taylor was there, he's one of the judges, and I spoke there. So we were great partners in that. As Councilwoman Gregory said, the Habitat Gala, wonderful event. I was honored to be one of the 2023 chefs, celebrity chefs, and they raised, I mean, over, just about $50,000 this year for our residents. So that is just amazing work that they do.
The two houses.
Which, again, funded two homes in our area, the ones on Gray Street. So that is just, you know, remarkable in how the community comes together for these efforts. So we definitely support them and definitely proud of the work that they're doing. Do want to wish Councilwoman Jackson a happy belated birthday. We wished her birthday on last Thursday, but happy belated birthday, even though she's not with us here. And last but not least, want to wish my fellow council members, and of course, the clerks off the staff, and all the women in the area, happy National Women's History Month for all the work you all do, our interns, Anisa and Skylar. And of course, I am so honored to work alongside some wonderful women who keep me in tune. But, you know, hats off to you all for the work you do and for the efforts and the steps that you all have made and the strides that you all do in this, in our society and in our community. So thank you all on behalf of council, behalf of myself. We appreciate you all. And with nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved, second.
All right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This meeting is now adjourned.